Council Agenda Township of Precipity Troy Hills, regular Township Council meeting of November 26, 2019.
Posting of notice, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 19, 2018, where it remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on December 27, 2018, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 19, 2018. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Public Access Channel 21 at 7:00 PM Sundays and Wednesdays and are also available for viewing at www.parcipany.net.
Please rise and flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiro?
Here.
Ms. Grignani?
Present.
Ms. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Cariffy?
Here.
Also in attendance are Business Administrator Keith Kazmark, Mayor Michael Soriano, Township Attorney Jim Lot, and Township Clerk Colette Madden. Council President, we have a quorum, you may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, December 3, 2019, 7:00 PM Agenda Meeting, December 17, 2019, at 7:00 PM Regular Meeting. Approval of minutes, regular meeting, October 15, 2019. Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiro, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Cariffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Presentation reports, Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. The only presentation and announcement I have is that on Saturday, December 7, Santa Claus Comes to Town Hall. Okay, that starts at 5:00. We have, there will be hot chocolate, there will be cookies, there will be gifts for the children, there will be Santa Claus. There will also be the combined champions, as we're calling them, for this year's sporting events, both the Precipity Hills High School, Precipity High School football teams, Precipity Hills High School's Lady Vikings Soccer Championship Soccer Team, and the PAL's Middle School Ice Hockey Team that just won the champions championship this Sunday. So they'll be as part of that Christmas tree celebration as well. Also at the behest of Councilmember Loretta Gragnani and Janice, Council Vice President Janice McCarthy, we will be collecting food. And there'll be a list put out on the 7th. We're encouraging the children to bring that before they speak with Santa Claus and to any and all guests to benefit the food bank at the Precipity High School. Thank you very much, Mr. Council President. This concludes my report. And my last thing is I just want to wish everyone a happy, safe, and healthy Thanksgiving. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Township Council?
I have items for closed session tonight. Oh, I'm sorry.
Nothing at this time.
Yeah, I would just like to echo what the Mayor said and congratulate our high school football teams. Precipity Hills is still going, going for the state championship this week, and...
What time is that at?
I believe they moved it. It was 4:00 PM and then they moved it to 7:00, correct? Or did they...
It's, I believe it's back at 4:00, but we'll make sure we email blast it out, but it's 4:00 at, well, I still call it Giant Stadium.
At the Meadowlands?
At the Meadowlands.
Throw out a shout to JD, bring it home, buddy.
Does anybody have information, is there going to be a bus that we can purchase to go?
I think I saw on Facebook that there would be a bus.
I'll have to look for it.
Okay. Township Attorney, Mr. Lot?
I have items for closed session tonight.
Thank you. Business Administrator, Mr. Kazmark?
I too only have items for closed session, although I am very happy that Par High is going to the state championship after they beat my Hornets, significantly so, back in September. So once again, congratulations to Mayor Soriano, and I just want to wish everybody a happy and healthy Thanksgiving.
Par Hills.
Par High? They must have beat you guys.
No, no, Par High is the one that beat...
Oh, gotcha.
The Sage Valley, so.
But also won last week.
Yes.
Yes.
But I'm sure Par Hills will beat them too.
Settle down.
Par Hills must have beat you really bad, you can't even remember it.
We don't play them.
Township Clerk?
No report at this time, Council President, except just to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Township Offices, Committees, Reports?
Nothing, not at this time.
Council President?
Yes.
In addition to the items for closed session as noted on the agenda, we actually have one late starter. Mr. Kazmark, that would be attorney-client privilege for Vreeland Avenue?
Yes, I've already asked the Council President to add it to the executive session resolution.
Right, now the attorney-client privilege, and what's the address? It's...
445 Vreeland Ave.
Okay, bids taken. October 17, one new 2020 four-by-two class eight chassis and rear loader for the sanitation department. October 31, well four and well four A airstripping facility repacking and rehabilitation. November 7, Knoll West Country Club system irrigation replacement. To be taken, quotations, proposals, qualifications, public hearing. This time I'd like to entertain a motion, open up the public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiro, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Cariffy?
Yes.
The floor is open to the public on any matter.
Okay, if you wish to speak, come up, please state your name and address, you'll be given five minutes.
Good evening, Ken Dolsky, 21 Woodfield Drive. About a month ago, on October 29, I sent you all a letter, including the letter, and did not see a single response. The letter basically requests that you ask what it's going to cost us to comply with the fair share housing plan that was adopted, you know, recently, I guess on October 29.
Can you please speak up into the mic, maybe it's off.
Hold on. All right, well, I'll just speak up.
That's not how it works.
Okay, better, okay, all right. So I sent you a letter asking that the town investigate what it's going to cost us to comply with the fair share housing plan. Given that nobody responded, let me read you the letter. Given that the court granted the township a conditional final judgment of compliance and repos through July 1, 2025, we must now look at the costs this will impose on the town. This is important for at least three reasons. One, as citizens and taxpayers, we have a right to understand the net costs the courts have imposed upon us without our having a vote in this matter. Two, the sooner these costs are identified, the sooner the administration and council can start looking for ways to reduce or share these costs. Three, given the upward pressure on taxes that is likely to result from these new developments, it is prudent to get ahead of this issue and prepare residents for the increases to come and ensure they understand the cause. Therefore, we request that the administration provide a best estimate of the costs of the fair share housing settlement to the township and the Precipity Troy Hills school system over the next five years. The analysis should include the following: a total count of all new housing units that will be constructed due to this settlement, and the number of low-income units included in this total, number of bedrooms that will be constructed in these units, assumption as to the increase in school-aged children that will occupy these units and the resulting increase in the Board of Ed budget, the cost of traffic management, law enforcement, emergency services, all legal costs, including payment of fair share housing legal costs, subsidies to eligible homeowners, for example, the Market to Affordable Program, utility costs and capacities, waste management costs, road improvement, et cetera, net revenue change in property taxes, increases from new buildings, decreases from removal of existing commercial buildings to replace them with residential buildings, any changes in taxes on rental properties based on occupancy, and finally, the net financial impact to the township. And also explore the impact on water, as was stated in the draft master plan, that we may not have enough water to do some of the fair share housing construction and will have to buy water from other towns. Having had some experience with estimating and modeling, we would like to offer our services to participate in this effort. And I worked on this with Rob Peluso and obviously myself. So what I'm asking the town to do is to get ahead of this, do some modeling, you don't have exact costs, but do the best you can, and let us know what this is going to cost us. I don't think that's, you know, a ridiculous thing for the town to do. You're going to get hit with this at some point, and then you're going to be explaining it to irate homeowners as to why their taxes are going up. And you're better off doing it sooner rather than later. So I don't know whether we've had a chance to think about this, but I would like a response as to whether you plan to do this or you choose not to. Second thing that I just wanted to mention is that there are several ordinances that are being introduced tonight, and none of them are, or maybe one is physically here so we can see it. The others are not available, not on the website, nowhere to be seen. I think this is bad practice. I think if you're introducing an ordinance, we ought to at least have a copy of the ordinance in paper, and frankly, we should have a copy attached to the agenda electronically so that we can look at it before we come in here and have to try and sit and read some of these things, which basically are in like two-point font and require extra strong reading glasses.
I just want to respond to that. I'm sorry, once you're done, can I apologize?
Let me finish.
Yeah, Lou.
So the two ordinances, so that's just a general comment. There are two ordinances, one is 69, that is going to assess additional connection fees on previously connected properties for sewage and water, and the other is 70 appropriating a $3 million for the water utility. So I would like you to explain both of those to us tonight so we understand what's involved in those. Thank you.
So, Mr. President, I can tackle 2019-69, we can get you a copy of the ordinance as well. As a result of a recent change in state law, municipalities are now allowed to assess a connection fee where there's a substantial increase either in the previously rates of water and sewer usage. Prior to the change, once the property was connected, it paid the fee once, but now as a result of a change of use of the property, there's an opportunity, if there's a significant increase in the volume of water or sewers generated, for the township to go back and then get a new connection fee.
Is that only when the property changes hands?
It can be from a change of ownership, or it can be a change from the physical use of the property, addition to square footage, for example, addition of restaurant tables, addition of additional, addition for additional types of industrial activity.
Okay. I just wanted to address the ordinance. I know you had expressed concern about ordinances not being available to the public prior to introduction. The reason being that we don't make ordinances available initially is because technically, until they are technically adopted, it's considered a deliberative document, and it could be subject to change anytime, so we don't want to mislead the public. So in order for us to try to alleviate that, what we do is we post the agenda by title only for the ordinance, and if the public should have any questions, you can always contact my office. And, you know, unless the administration and the council want to change that policy and start giving out the ordinance's resolutions, we can do that, but I've always held it that way because due to Oprah, these documents are deliberative, and they're subject to change, and, you know, it is dependent on the inner workings of government. So if you have any suggestions, Ken, I'm always open, you can always come by my office, and we can discuss how we can better be able to serve the public that way. My suggestion is go for transparency, and draft, you know, and mark it draft, you know, for discussion purposes only, not to be taken seriously, whatever you want, and err on the side of providing the access to the information. Again, I'm open to that, I'd have to discuss it with council and administration, and if they're open, we can always mark a draft, and we can release it, I have no issue with that, absolutely.
And as for ordinance 2019-70, that's a capital appropriation for various water improvements, and I don't know the full extent to that, Mr. Administrator, I don't know if you have additional information.
So we do have a number of projects that are upcoming. Some of this is a reallocation of prior authorized debt service. We have a, at least one tank that's going to be painted in 2020, both interior and exterior, in addition to a number of water main breaks that we've experienced over the past number of years, so we are trying to get ahead of replacing the infrastructure in the ground as well, and there are some improvements to the plan.
So it would be good to know those things, and it also would be good to know why we're bonding instead of trying to use current funds, and what the impact of the previous administration's use of the water fund has been that might be causing us now to have to bond when we might otherwise either have had the money or could basically get along, you know, paying as you go.
So you just answered the question.
Well, I'd like to hear that more, you know, I'd like to, you know, we should have a formal explanation, maybe, you know, talking about what the impact was of taking that money, what we're looking at now, what it's going to cost us, you know, what the alternatives are in terms of using current funds, raising taxes versus the impact of having to bond for it, and then paying it back eventually with interest.
I'm sure the topic that you've just brought up is going to be a serious discussion as we enter the 2020 budget season.
And plus, it's on record already, you can hold the other council meetings, we've talked about this.
Okay, well, give us the information so that we can...
The information's out there, Ken, you know. We'll be bringing it up again.
Well, I have pieces of this stuff, I don't have...
We'll be bringing it up again.
All in one nice place, so I could understand it, you know. Any comments on the request to look at the fair share housing cost?
That's currently still in litigation, it's not finalized yet.
Really?
Yes.
Whoa. Okay, so should I come back and make this request another day, or do you want to get ahead of it and think about it now?
I'll check with Ms. London to see where we are with the compliance order. I know that they were submitting additional documents as required by the court.
Yeah, I mean, I thought it was just minor details, that it was basically a done deal.
I'll check with her. As I said, there were a number of things that we needed to submit, so.
And we'll get back to you about the ordinances after I discuss it with the council, and I never knew this was an issue prior, so we'll discuss it, and I'll definitely reach out to you and let you know. Generally isn't, but if I look at something, we're going to spend $3 million, and there could be more explanation, it'd be nice to know why. Absolutely, but you know you can always call our office and we can get that to you. Oh, you'll be sorry you said that. No, you know me.
And by the way, you brought up some good points on that. Thank you.
Here.
Here.
Precipity Focus, Pen.
I think there are whole series of improvements, I was subject to that. Yeah. There's some leak detection, some well rehabilitation, some equipment.
Just leave it there, Bob. Just leave it there.
My name is Bob Venedzie, I live at 102 Brooklawn Drive. A couple of months ago, one of the council members asked how much it would cost the township to install the eye-scanning system at Town Hall. No answer was given that night, and at the time, I really didn't have much of an interest about the eye scanner. However, that changed after I read a recent comment to a letter to the editor in the Precipity Focus. In his post, the commenter alleged that the company from which Precipity purchased the eye-scanning system is owned by the brother of our business administrator. The commenter labeled this relationship as a blatant conflict of interest, and if true, I agree with him.
Mr. Venedzie, I'm an only child.
Okay, then it's not true.
I guess he's not your brother.
Well, I figured before you continued, you should, you know, have full disclosure as to the fact that I have no siblings.
So...
Who wrote that off?
It was a, it was a letter to the editor, and the comment, there was a comment to it, and it was from a guy named Costigan, the comment.
First I'm hearing about.
So no relative of yours is...
Makes me feel like I need to do a DNA test, but you need to talk to your parents.
I think I did one seat for Thanksgiving, Keith.
So no relative of yours is associated with the scanning company?
The eye scanner was paid for, was contracted through Paychecks, which is the company that has long-served Precipity in producing our payroll on a week-to-week basis. There's, we contracted with the company to provide eye scanners who has done our payroll for years. I don't know what else to say.
Okay, you just set the record straight, and that's, you have a chance to do that.
Happy to.
Okay, so that answers question number one. No relative of yours is involved with the company.
100% correct.
Oh, I thought you had it, no, I'm just kidding, so kidding, please.
No, go ahead.
So, well, how much did the eye-scanning system cost to install, and how much does it cost annually to operate? Was the expenditure approved by the council, or is it something that the administration can authorize without council approval? Normally, an eye-scanning system is installed for security purposes, but at Town Hall, it seems like it's simply being used as a time clock. What are the benefits that this system provides to the township? And then the last question, the allegation isn't true, so it does not apply. So if you can answer these, you know, the questions that do apply, I'd appreciate it. If you have to research them, any of them, you can get, you know, get back to me at the next meeting.
So through you, Council President?
Go ahead.
Mr. Venedzie, I would need to have finance calculate the yearly cost. The way the contract works, just as it does for payroll processing, is it's spread over our monthly bill list, so I'd have to do a total calculation of what the costs were. Obviously, there was a cost associated with purchasing each of the clocks, okay? When I arrived here in October of 2018, there were no time clocks in anywhere but DPW, and I want to say maybe Water and Sewer, I'd have to go back into my notes. So basically, employees were on the honor system. I had a concern about that, I didn't have any evidence that anybody was abusing time, but, you know, as an administrator in another town, I have gone to court and had to testify in Superior Court about employees' whereabouts relative to their time in attendance. So it's a sensitive issue for me. Not to say that anything was being done wrong in Precipity, but I thought it was something that was important. When we researched it through the efforts of Dave Miller, our IT Director, and our payroll folks, we sat down and interviewed multiple companies who could provide the service to the township. It was an easy choice to go with Paychecks because they were already integrated into our payroll system. This is not just a time clock system where we're checking employees in and out at the beginning of the day, at lunchtime, and at the end of the day. This has actually become our payroll system. So employees can now go online, request time off, request vacation days, request professional development days, request sick days, and that gets tied in to the payroll system. So not only have we put in a level of accountability with the time clock system, but we've also made our payroll system much more efficient. So those are the benefits to the entire program. I will tell you that we're in the process right now of integrating it into the Police Department, and there was initially some resistance amongst the folks down at the Police Department to having the system down there, but once we sat down with IT and payroll, and we showed representatives from the PBA, representatives of the leadership of the Police Department, the benefits of being able for time and attendance purposes, in addition for overtime purposes, because obviously, police get paid overtime, that there's a lot of enhanced benefits to our payroll system in addition to the accountability piece.
Okay, and the, but the cost, you know, you gave that same answer a couple of months ago when the question was originally brought up, and...
And the individual who asked the question was sent the information. I can get the current information, and I'll be glad to send it to you tomorrow.
Did you get it?
Me? I didn't get it.
You're the one that asked it.
Oh, did I? Okay, no.
No, there was a member of the public who asked the question as well.
And unfortunately, Ann Cucci is not here this evening, so we won't, maybe perhaps when she comes back, Keith, you could have that information.
Absolutely.
And was this something that the council approved, the eye scanner, or was it something that you can just authorize?
The thing is, if I can just say, we generally with the agenda, every agenda, there's an agenda that's given to the council and a bills list. On that bills list is every expense that the township incurs, and the council does have to approve that, just to answer your question.
All right, so they did?
Absolutely.
All right, well, that's it. Thank you.
The ordinance Ken brought up, the 2019-70, I believe this was if the council voted the tax raise, the average $4, and I believe 32 cents it was, for the average homeowner, we could have paid for this infrastructure outright. So what I'm interested in is what would the difference be between what we're paying the bond, the bond for this, as compared to if we okayed a tax raise? You don't understand?
No, I understand you, I don't know where you're coming up with that.
With what?
You're saying if we didn't cut taxes, we would have been able to pay the $3 million upfront without bonding for that?
That's the way I understood it. The cumulative effect of all that money would have, would have done the...
That the cuts that we made were not pertaining to $3 million for this?
It was, there were cuts, period.
There were cuts, period, yes, but...
For the municipal tax.
For this project alone?
It would be one of the things, yes. The way I understood it, this could have been paid in cash without bonding. So my question is, how much extra or less is the taxpayer paying for this by bonding or not bonding? If that's clear? No? Nobody's interested?
So through you, Council President, I think where Nick is going is, there was $3 million that was moved from both the water and sewer surplus accounts in the utilities, moved over to current fund to lessen the burden on the taxpayer. But, so, I understand where you're coming up with the number, but what I'm going to say to you is that a larger portion of that came from the sewer side than the water side. So to say that we wouldn't have to bond $3 million if we didn't make that transfer of both water and sewer surplus is not completely accurate.
I'm not talking about the sewer surplus, I'm talking about the benefits of that minor tax raise for the community's benefit. We couldn't have paid, we still would have had to bond $3 million for this water infrastructure here?
What he's trying to say is if we didn't make those cuts, we could have raised taxes $3 million more?
No.
Pay for this project?
No, 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 I didn't say that, no, no, no.
You just said if we didn't make the cuts, we would have been able to pay for this in cash without bonding for it.
Yes, but that's not...
We cut this out. Isn't that what you just said?
No, now we have to bond rather than pay cash. We would have had more money, and we could have paid for this. Not rocket scientists. I have a question, affordable housing and everything, but these landlords that own these apartment buildings, and they get all the rent profit, I guess, do they pay anything into the community for Board of Education taxes at all, or is it just a municipal tax? A regular apartment building like Knoll Gardens, or you pick it, do they...
Say a less, do you have any other questions?
Meh, I don't know. Nah, that's probably it.
So your tax rate is divided into four components. There's the component for municipal purposes, there's a component for school purposes, there's a component for county tax purposes, and if you live within a special district in the township, usually a fire district, there's a portion of it that also supports the fire district. You know, I have to take a look at your tax bill, but it's typical that somewhere between 60 and 65% of your tax dollar goes to the school district?
Correct.
Right? So the answer to your question is yes.
So the landlord that owns an apartment complex does pay the Board of Education?
Correct, right, right.
Okay.
Right. He's assessed just like any other property owner in a township.
All right.
He or she. He or she.
And not for anything, but I still see municipal vehicles idling sometimes. There's a no-idling law, and if they're, like, they go on break, or they take a lunch, and they leave a tractor running or something, to me, they shouldn't be doing that. We don't live in Alaska. I'm sure the thing will start back up, so that's, you know, a little waste going out there, and a little air pollution, too. All right, happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, same to you.
Okay, so no one else come forward. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance for introduction, ordinance 2019: colon 69. An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending sewer and water code provisions to clarify the township's intent to assess additional connection fees on previously connected properties on which sewer and water usage materially increases. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on November 26, 2019, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 17, 2019 at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time or soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2019: colon 70, bond ordinance of providing for the improvements to the water utility in and by the township of Parsippany Troy Hills and the County of Morris, New Jersey, appropriating $3 million, therefore en authorizing the issuance of the $3 million bonds or notes in the township to finance the cost thereof. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on the first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on November 26, 2019, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 17 at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2019-71, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 385, towing of the Code of Parsippany Troy Hills. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on November 26, 2019, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 17, 2019 at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2019: colon 72, ordinance of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, in the County of Morris, authorizing the execution of a second amendment to the redevelopment agreement and amended financial agreement in connection with the redevelopment of Block 200, Lot 1.2 and 1.03, in the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on November 26, 2019, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 17, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Council President, may I have, may I indulge you, and may I have one minute on the microphone?
Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Venedzie, I just pulled up the article that you were referencing from October 15, 2019, written by one Roy Mesmer, who is a resident of Delaware. Resident of Delaware. That's very interesting, and it wasn't Mr., it wasn't him who made the comment about... Actually, it's brother-in-law. Okay, it's about your brother-in-law, and it's commented by a gentleman by the name of Brian Costigan. Okay, so you're coming up to a council meeting to ask a question on someone that comments on Facebook? We're very serious to hear about what we do, and I like when you come up and ask good questions. I do, because I respect you. But I want you to be a little more careful where you get your information. This is the equivalent of rumor heard in a bathroom. Okay, I appreciate that. I appreciate that, but I would, I would be, I would like to, hold on, hold on, I have, I have the podium up here. Thank you, Mr. Council President, for that, but I just want you to vet your information a bit more carefully, and I would appreciate it, but I want you to continue to come up and ask your tough questions. I have no problem with it, and I thank you.
All right, let's move on with the meeting.
But, Mr. Council President, thank you very much for your indulgence.
Okay, ordinance for second reading, ordinance 2019: colon 67. An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 4, Administration of Government, Article 4, Township Clerk of the Code of Parsippany Troy Hills, establishing compensation for municipal clerk and deputy clerk for election-related matters when other municipal employees are off. Notice for the above ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on November 18, 2019. This ordinance was introduced at the November 12, 2019 Agenda Meeting. Motion to accept that ordinance 2019: colon 67, be heard in a second final reading by title only.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2019: colon 67.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open on this ordinance only. Seeing no one else?
Seeing no one come forward, motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2019: colon 67.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title and second reading and the hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, at this time, we're going to be going into closed session.
No, 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 not at this time. We're going to wait until after closed session, we'll come back out and act on it, only, unless you want to do this, Council President.
Mr. Lodge, did you change something?
Only because, only because we're going to, if we do that, we're going to be going into closed, out of closed.
Yes, I thought we were just going to go into closed for two minutes and then come back out.
Is it going to be two minutes?
I think it will probably be less than two minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's say we're not keeping the public...
So, we will be taking action, so we'll be right back out. It'll be very quick.
Correct.
Okay, so let's do a, I need a motion to adjourn into closed?
Yes, Ms. Peterson's got it.
You need me to read the whole thing?
I do need you to read that, and I, but I do only need you to state why, or define district.
Just fire district.
Got it. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss Vreeland Avenue property...
No, fire district, no.
No, just fire district.
Sorry, oh, Fire District Number 1 EMS Bay and litigation, contract negotiations, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. Motion to adjourn in a closed session.
I just have one hyper-technical correction. There is no litigation with respect to EMS Bay. It's all contract negotiation.
Oh.
Okay?
So, we have a...
It's a typo on the agenda.
So, we have a motion, and a second by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
We'll be adjourning into closed session just for two minutes. Thank you.
On the record. Entertain a motion or reconvene?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy? Back in.
So, before council undertains the motion, the resolution, it'd be Resolution 2019-223. I have two technical corrections. The second whereas clause should indicate after 850 square feet that it's approximately 8.5% of the entire building, and the next-to-last whereas clause on page number one should indicate that the township shall pay 10% of electric, gas, telephone, cable utilities supplied to the building, including the cost associated with generator maintenance.
Thank you.
Okay, so non-consent agenda?
Yes.
Resolution R. 2019-223, Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, approving a lease agreement with the Board of Fire Commissioners, Mount Tabor Volunteer Fire District Number 1. Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Be it resa, consent agenda, be it resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are routine and non-controversial by the Township Council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Approval of payroll and bill list. CFO Ann Cucci recommends authorization for payment. One, authorized payment of the November 27, 2019, regular and miscellaneous payroll estimated at $1,800,000. Two, payment of bills from voucher list of 11/12/19 through 12/3/19 is $9,353,955.56. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Well, let me say again that we're not getting the bills list as we discussed, and that continues to be a problem, and I don't think it gives us sufficient time to review the bills list and go back and ask questions.
Thank you for bringing that up, Ms. McCarthy. What I will do is, tomorrow, I will convene a meeting with the business administrator, and we will discuss as to how we're going to go ahead and try to get that before you in a sufficient amount of time, and we may bring you in on the call as well, so we will, we will handle that, and thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yes. So, it was a yes?
Oh, it was a yes, sorry. I got thrown off. So, Ms. McCarthy, Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Executive Session Resolution, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss contract negotiations, Kemper Sports, attorney-client privilege, Carriffy litigations, and the Vreeland Avenue property, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. Motion to adjourn in a closed session.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?